Administrator Newsom, Ross Artisan, I believe, is on the phone. He'll be joining us as needed this evening. At this time, I would like to invite our new police chief, Andrew Connetti.
You want to get him?
His family here, right?
Yeah, his family too. Invite them all in.
Andrew, you want to come up?
Scoot out, yeah. You're gonna stand in front of me, are you?
And repeat after me as you raise your red hand, please. I, Andrew Connetti, who solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the city of Arlington.
And the Charter of the city of Arlington.
And to discharge faithfully and impartially.
And to discharge faithfully and impartially.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As chief of police for the city of Arlington.
As chief of police for the city of Arlington.
For the best of my knowledge, judgment, and authority.
For the best of my knowledge.
Do you sign any of these?
One copy is for you. One copy is for the city. I shouldn't sign.
If you want, your family wants some pictures here, maybe?
They just have a picture.
You want to get them there in a picture here? Bring them up, put the flag if you want. We'll get them for you.
That's why they dressed up.
No, we always wear this. I want to get a picture.
Whoever wants.
Take a picture. Sure.
That's the newspaper. Oh, sure.
That's way. You're gonna have to come.
One more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you have your copy? I will give you your copy. There you go.
That's your copy.
Hmm? Yes.
That will be the least of your worries.
Okay, at this time, I would ask for me, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to retract the motion that I made at our previous complementing regarding the eviction at the.
Okay, and where would we put?
Number thirteen.
Number thirteen, okay. And I was just calling you at that time?
And also, I'd like to add, having the position for the ambulance, maybe adding a spot on there for
Certainly.
A sentence regarding them being part of the fire department as well.
Um, okay, where are we doing this?
That is G five, G.
Okay, so five G would be approved by the post for maintenance system in this measure and by your department member?
Well, do you want to remove that from the consent agenda?
You want a discussion or do you want to just?
Ah, well, I kind of would like to slip that in there if we can, the fire department part. I guess if we need to discuss it more than.
Let's pull, let's pull item G and discuss another new business. And you can bring up your point at that time.
Thank you.
I have two other items to add as well. Under new business, because I'd like to discuss this, approve hiring of Daniel Hughes as maintenance worker. He is requesting to start at step four, which is nineteen forty-eight per hour. And then I have number eighteen would be chief, fire chief Zaski contacted me this afternoon that the turbo went out on Tinker One. He is estimating the cost to fix it is seven thousand dollars. In order to get a second quote, he would have to have it towed somewhere, which is an additional cost. He's having peeps prepare his quote, but he's guessing around seven thousand dollars. That needs council approval to have that fixed.
I'm sorry, you missed the first one. I was jiving down some of the things here. The first item would be the.
Number seventeen. Approve the hiring of Daniel Hughes as maintenance worker. He's requesting to start at step four, which is nineteen forty-eight an hour.
I would call on you immediately to that, and you can explain it to me.
Okay.
Hey, everyone have those changes or additions, if you're saying? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Of course, by council member Omer and second by council member Jeter to approve the agenda with changes noted. All favor say aye?
Aye.
There's no? Motion carried. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Item A, approval of the bill. Item B, June first, twenty twenty council workshop minutes. Item C, June first, twenty twenty city council minutes. And I believe that includes a correction that was brought to our attention by a member of the or citizen, and that correction has been made. Item D, June eighth, twenty twenty employee relations personnel committee minutes. Item E, accept resignation of Michael Kudrowski effective July ninth. Item F, approve job posting for full-time exempt planning and zoning administrator coordinator. Item G, approve liquor renewal for Arlington dugout LLC off sale, on sale, Sunday, and community center. Item H, approve liquor renewal for Arlington Raceway on sale. Item I, approve liquor renewal for Arlington Liquors off sale. Item J, approve liquor renewal for Arlington House off sale, on sale, and Sunday. Item K, approve hiring of Mario Hernandez as an EMT. And item L, approve hiring of Travis Patterson as EMT. Is there a motion for this?
I've got one question of the licenses. Did we talk about reducing them for this year?
Correct. And we did.
So did we?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's why they're all on this agenda at the same time. I let them all know that I was going to council at the last meeting, and I would get them all on the agenda for this meeting.
That was my only question.
Can I have a motion, please?
Oh, my motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion by council member Morgan, second by council member Batchory to approve the consent agenda as read. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Motion is carried. Addressing the council. Is there someone in the hallway that wishes to address the council at this time? Yes, would you come in and have a seat there, please? And identify yourself and your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Would you pull a microphone closer to? Well, for recording purposes, it.
Okay. I'm four oh one East Adams Street. I don't even live in my house during the winter because of seeing problems driving back and forth. I, so I stay at my mom's during, in South Minneapolis during the winter. And this is proof that I don't stay at my house. This is my water bill. Okay, all of a sudden randomly, they're claiming that I use thirty-two thousand seven hundred and five gallons of water. Which would fill a forty by twenty-foot pool five and a half to, or five to five and a half feet deep over two months. It's not possible. I wasn't living there. Now, they wrote off the sewer part, which this is the most expensive. I appreciate that, but why can't they write off the hundred and seventy dollars? They said I had to come talk to you guys about that part. I have a very fixed income. I can't afford it. I checked with my neighbors. I'm the only one who live there. My cat can't turn off the, turn on the water. I believe, I, I checked, she can't. My neighbors have two adults and three kids. They use an average of thirty thousand gallons, which is unbelievable, a month. I don't know how. My other neighbors have five people in there, and they use an average of six to seven thousand gallons a month. I'm one person, wasn't living there. I took a picture of, because I yelled at some kids for littering and they didn't pick it up. When I came home, first off, I didn't get a call until this had been going on for a month. And I get a call on January, on March twenty-seventh, else on my way into town. And I did find an outside faucet trickling. Okay, I took a photo. I took a video of it. Can I bring this video up to you? So you can see it?
Certainly.
That's how I found it out. That's full blast. There's no way it can do thirty-three thousand gallons.
So is that?
I agree that one of the kids in the neighborhood, I yelled at for turns littering. Turned it on to get back in. So I'm asking for the hundred and seventy dollars to be forgiven.
Okay, well, generally, this is the, this is the time of the meeting when we hear people and hear their issues. And we'll be discussing it at a future meeting or later in this meeting, whether we make a decision or not. It's we don't know.
Okay, well, I asked to be put on the agenda, but they didn't do.
No, this is the time when you're in the proper spot on the agenda. So I, the only thing I would say is that water, according to the, the chart you showed, that water all went, all went through your meter. It's just a matter of where it went after.
Do you, do you have a meter outside?
No. Downstairs.
So I know I'm like, I got a, I got an extra meter from the city, and I think it was like ten bucks or something to hook up for my outside. And then I would, I'd write that on the bill.
No, this was a. And I, I started taking pictures of the meter and would record what just happened. And because inside my toilet sink, it says one point two eight gallons per flush. So I would take a picture of it, and go downstairs, and then go upstairs and flush it. It was claiming I was using three gallons per flush. So I asked them to come out and change my meter out, and they couldn't because of COVID.
So, so you said it was a hundred and seventy dollars?
That I want forgiven. I, I keep, I pay my bills ahead of time.
But you, you said like thirty thousand gallons?
Because I, I paid it, my bill, except for the hundred and thirty-five from the first excessive bill, and then thirty-five from the second excessive bill.
Do you have a shut-off in your house where no one is living there, you just find you shut off the water? It wouldn't go through the meter at all? Is there a, is there, just asking, is there a valve?
I don't know.
Ahead of the meter? Typically, there is. So just, just an aside. Obviously, there wasn't now because the water wouldn't be trickling enough in the way that, when you found it, so.
But, well, and I tried turning it off, that run off all the way, and I couldn't.
And it's, yeah.
It, it's.
Need some repair. All right, well, thank you for sharing with us.
Can the late payment, the late fee needs to be stopped until it's, until this is taken care of? Because it's at ten percent they claim to write. And I'm not getting anything until it's decided.
Can we put it on the agenda for, again, the agenda for?
You can.
At least touching this on.
I have to go on.
That's fine, we'll. We have a request, and it's okay with the rest of the council, just for discussion, not necessarily decision.
Correct.
All right, it will be on at the end of the meeting for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to speak for council, please? Please use a microphone there, identify yourself and.
Mayor, it's the council. I am Danielle DeBoer. I live at seven oh five Fourth Street, Angry Isle. Um, I have the privilege of being one of the recruits for the Arlington ambulance service. Um, I class got both homes for COVID nineteen, but I'm very anxious to get started and really forward to serving the community. I'm a very active resident. Um, I come forward today because at our last meeting, Arlington Ambulance Service with the JPA, um, it was discussed that the JPA has been canceled at seven six this year, I believe. And I was told that there were no members of the ambulance services in that decision-making process. And so I wanted to just break forth a couple of concerns to the council from the members of the ambulance services between oh six. Um, both cities agreed that working together has worked very well between these last few months, especially during COVID nineteen. And our records shows that there's about almost fifty, fifty percent between the two services on the time and coverage for calls being answered. Um, everybody seems to be getting along very well. I've been with only a short time. But the bond that I see is real. So with the JPA being signed to end, both cities are very concerned that there will not be enough coverage to serve the community, because this is a volunteer service that they are providing. So it was discussed among the group, and we all decide it would be very beneficial to continue on the JPA until either another solution is decided. Because so far, it has worked very well, according to our teams and our records. And I would also like to ask if the council has any information that I can pass on to my team as to any solution that has been decided, if there has been one, or what we are asked to do once July sixth rolls around and when the JPA is over.
Okay. Right now, I guess I would, I would ask you to sit down and visit with our city administrator about any information she could share with you at a different time.
Okay.
If you can do that, that would be appreciated.
Awesome. All right, well, then I guess, I'm just trying to just, and yeah, I do have this very long.
And thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Council, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that wishes to speak?
No.
No, okay. We won't move on.
Oh, okay.
All right, moving on to item seven announcements.
Community cleanup day is this Thursday, nine AM to four PM at the Sibley County Fairgrounds. There will be dumpsters there for residents free of charge. Arlington residents only.
Okay. Any questions on that? Move on to communications. First item is twenty nineteen financial audit from AEM, and this is Erin. Erin's going with us this evening. Good to you.
Erin, here.
All right, I'm just. Can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me tonight. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. If at any time you can't hear me or have a question, please feel free to interrupt me at any time. But thank you for having me tonight in a little bit different format than what we usually do. And hopefully next year, I'll be back in person. Like I said, if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. What we're going to go through is kind of the PowerPoint presentation. So it's an overview, kind of a high-level overview of the financial statements. And then if you want, we can dig into the details of more of the audit report, which has all the detailed breakdown between funds, departments, and whatnot. So we can get into that if anyone wants to dig into the details a little bit more. So we will start kind of going over the audit results. So auditor's opinion, so our responsibility is to make sure that the financial statements are free of any material misstatements and to express an opinion on the financial statements. So we express an unmodified or clean opinion. So that's a good thing, and that's what every city is looking for. And then another piece of our audit is testing for Minnesota LEO compliance. So there's certain things like FDIC coverage, making sure your deposits are fully insured, looking at contracting and bidding. If you guys went out for bids for the appropriate, you know, however many bids or quotes you received, depending on the contract dollar amount, looking at vendor pay payments, when it got paid to vendors, and that. So a variety of tests that we're testing just strictly for LEO compliance, state statutes. And we didn't, didn't come across any findings related to that. So all our testing is based on sampling, so we don't test one hundred percent of the transactions. But of the sampling size that we select, we did not come across any compliance issues. So we'll go over the findings. There was one finding similar to what it's been in the past, is the internal control finding. So just with the limited number of staff, it just makes it difficult to get rid of this finding because it's not proper controls in place. Doesn't mean that the city doesn't have any controls in place. It just doesn't mean that there are enough controls to say that you have proper working internal controls. So I always say that makes your job as council members even more important because you have the extra set of eyes looking over things and that extra set of check and balances there. Now, looking at the general fund, fund balance. So you'll see the red line is your budget. The blue line is your unassigned or your available fund balance. And then the gray line is your fund balance policy. So if you can see, you know, last year to this year, it's pretty consistent with your reserves. So basically, kind of anything above that gray line could be used for capital needs if necessary. That's kind of the difference between the two, that you don't need as much for operating according to your policy. The next is looking at your general fund budget to actual. So here you'll see that overall, you know, you had a positive seven, seventy-five hundred compared to your budget, and then a total net change in your fund balance of twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand three hundred and five dollars. There is a transfer out. They wanted to just make a note, some of the larger transfers. They were for, so ninety-six thousand went to the capital improvement fund for future improvements, ninety-four thousand to the fire fund, fifty thousand to the community hall fund. So those were a majority of the transfers there. So like I said, overall, positive change in the general fund of the twenty thousand three hundred dollars. Then looking at your general fund revenues by type, to kind of give you an idea of where, where your, where the money comes from in the general fund, which is the main operating account of the city. So looking at taxes and grants is really a majority of the revenue. So you see the intergovernmental, that's the local LGA. Obviously, they've been pretty consistent year after year. So really looking at, in order to increase much, it's going to flow through taxes because the LGA just isn't changing a whole lot. So you can see there was an increase in taxes this year there, the revenue. Then on the next slide, we'll look at your general fund expenditures by type. So looking here, can you see the three-year trend and what that looks like? So you can see the public safety has kind of steadily increased every, you know, to the three years there. And then also, streets and highways did have a decent jump this, this year, mostly due to storm removal and then extra street maintenance costs. So now we'll dig into a little bit more of the other governmental funds. So your capital project funds here. So you'll see your capital equipment fund there that had an increase of a hundred and fifty-six thousand this year. And a lot of that was due to the transfer from the general fund of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then the two thousand nineteen street improvement fund, which is the capital project going on, or that went on in two thousand nineteen majority, you'll see that there was an increase of the two hundred and eleven thousand. A lot of that's due to the bond that was issued in two thousand nineteen, and it just hasn't all been sent down yet. So that will be spent down in two thousand twenty here. But that's the reason for that large increase there. And then two thousand seventeen improvements, there was a decrease of eighty thousand. That's just spending down the bond money as well for that project. And then you can see on the graph below, kind of, we say restricted money. That's an outside party telling you that you can only spend your money on certain things. So with that, that's the bond proceeds. So when you get money for a bond, that has to be used for the improvements or paying back the bond. So that's the restricted. The assigned is saying that it's kind of earmarked what you guys are setting aside. So that's going to be that capital equipment. There's no outside party telling you what it's needs to be used for, but you guys have it earmarked for future capital needs there. And then that unassigned is a negative fund balance there. Then we'll take a look at your special revenue funds. So the ambulance had an increase of ninety-three thousand. That does include a transfer of twenty-seven thousand five hundred from the general fund. And then fire had an increase of thirty-seven thousand, and that had a transfer from the general fund of ninety-four thousand one hundred. Those were kind of the major changes, otherwise pretty consistent, as you can see in the graph below. Pretty consistent overall there. Now, looking at the debt service funds. So this maps out your governmental debt. So the debt that is paid back by strictly tax levies and special assessments. So it takes a look at your future payments over the next ten years and what those payments look like. So you can see in the first table, looking at all, all the outstanding debt right now and the maturity dates there. And then the second graph maps it out on those payments. So if you see up until two thousand twenty-six, you're pretty steady. So basically, any new bonds that you issue before two thousand twenty-six will just add on to that debt service levy. And then in two thousand twenty-seven, ideally, that's when you would replace it, and then you have that steady line of debt service, so you don't have that huge, huge spikes in your tax levy for your debt service payments. It's just kind of something nice to monitor and look at when you're looking at future capital needs and how you're funding those future capitals. So now we'll take a look at your enterprise funds. So the difference between your governmental funds and your enterprise funds is your governmental funds are mainly supported by your tax levies. and your LGA and those types of grants. Your enterprise funds, your water, sewer, electric, those are supported by your charges for services. So really should operate like a business, their operating revenues should be able to cover their operating expenses. And that's kind of what we're going to be looking at here. So this top graph looks at, the blue line is your operating receipts. Your gray line is your operating dispersments and then your green is your debt payments. So ideally, the blue is enough to cover the gray and the green. So if you see here, you know, a four-year trend, obviously the water fund is doing well supporting their expenses there. And then you can see in the second graph, looks at your actual cash balance. So we have the actual cash balance being the green bar and then the blue line is your minimum target cash balance. So what that is, and it's something that we just at AEM kind of developed, is a minimum of 50% of your operating cost plus next year's debt service payments. Just kind of a guideline of about what you would maybe want as a reserve cash flow in that enterprise fund. So if you can see for 2019, 178,000 for your minimum target cash and then your cash balance is 918. So what that says is that you have a decent amount set aside for capital needs in this one. Obviously you guys are well aware of, improvements are very expensive, so it would take a lot to eliminate that reserve. But you do have a decent sized reserve in there for capital needs. Then moving on to the sewer fund. So here you'll see, you know, pretty consistently, other than 2016, I think that must have been a refunding bond that was paid off. But otherwise, the last three years, your operating revenues have been able to cover your costs and your debt payments. And you'll see that, you know, this year had a decent increase in cash here. And so you have a little bit more wiggle room for reserves and capital needs sewer fund as well. So now looking at your electric fund. So here you'll see, you're kind of right at that break even and even a little bit less. This year you're right at that break even, but the last three or two years, you know, kind of hasn't, your operating revenues have not been enough to cover your operating expenses and that. So you can see that picture there. And then on the next graph, looks at the cash balance. And you can see your cash balance has decreased over the past four years. So really that's saying that you're using your, a lot of your cash up for capital needs. So, you know, really looking at evaluating your electric charges to see, are you charging enough to cover all of your needs? Kind of obviously by this picture, it's, it's showing that probably not, it might need to be reevaluated to see what that looks like and what the future capital needs are for the fund and that. But I think that's something that maybe you might want to take a look, just seeing the trend going down there. Then looking at your storm water fund. So here you can see covering enough for your expenses and your debt payments, kind of right at that break even this year. But you did have an increase in cash this year. A lot of that is due to the bond proceeds that went into the funds, you had the money going in for the bond payments or for the bond that was issued. But there's still about 100,000 that needs to be spent, so that actually is part of it is restricted cash. About 100,000 is restricted cash that will be used for future, in 2020 when those expenses are paid. So I know that kind of looks a little misleading there that it had a huge increase in cash, but that will be used for the 2019 project. Then taking a look at your just total cash balances between all the funds. So as you can see, you're right at 6.6 million 91,000 for the year. So there was a pretty big increase in cash this year. You can see a majority of that is in the enterprise funds. You saw the water and sewer had a pretty good sizable increase in cash this year. Due to that, there was an increase there. So now looking at some key performance indicators. So what this is, is what we're doing is we're comparing cities similar in size, so the class four cities, and then also cities in your area, so cities in Sibley County, to see what they're, what, what they look like and that. I always like to say, no two cities are ever exactly the same. Every city has different activities, so I always like to say that, that it's just kind of, gives you an idea of where the city of Arlington sits with other cities similar in size and also other cities similar in area as well. So just kind of keep that in mind when we're looking at these. So taking a look at your tax rate, so as you, you can see you're kind of right in the middle there between the class four cities and Sibley County there with the tax rate. But I think what's a better picture is looking at your taxes per capita. And there, you know, you're pretty well below cities in Sibley County and class four cities there. And kind of just on a pretty steady, pretty flat line over the past four years there. Then taking a look at your debt, so long-term debt per capita. So here you can see that you are on the higher end from that, but we did just see on the previous slide that your taxes per capita were on the low end. So meaning that some of your debt is more utility based, paid, being paid for by your charges for services rather than your debt levy. So if you saw high taxes per capita, then I would say, well, most of your debt is related to your governmental tax levy debt. Showing this, that it's really more your enterprise debt that would be driving that piece of debt. You see debt service expenditures by percentage of current expenditures. So this is looking at your governmental debt in compared to the class four cities and Sibley County. So there you can see, you know, kind of that straight line and, you know, right in line with Sibley County and under Sibley County for 18. On the next slide, looking at current expenditures per capita. So kind of just getting an idea of where your current, meaning operating expenses fall compared to the others. There was that increase from 2018 to 2019, a lot of that relating to the public safety increase in expenses and also the public works expenses. And then the next graph just showing capital expenditures per capita. So this, this just kind of gives you an idea, it's really tough on capital expenses because it all just depends on timing of projects and when other cities are doing their projects. So as you can see, that you've, you've been doing some capital projects in 17 and also in 19 there. So it's all just timing on when projects happen, but just kind of gives you an idea of what other cities are spending capital dollars. Then we're looking at expenses per program, per capita. So as you can see, your public safety is a little bit higher, like what we talked about with that increase. But your public works is kind of right in line with the others for, this is comparing your 2000, your, the city of Arlington's 2019 data to the 2018 data from the class four cities of the Sibley County. Just because the 2019 data isn't available yet, but otherwise kind of look in line, like I said. But the capital, you know, you, you'll see that you're higher, but that just all depends on timing of projects there. And then on the next graph, looking at per capita revenues by source. So there you can see, you know, your taxes are like we saw in the previous slide. Your taxes are quite a bit lower than looking at class four cities and cities in Sibley County there.
Look at our charges for services.
Yeah, that's what.
Compared to our taxes.
Yeah, and that is just, I was just looking at that. So that's going to be, a lot of that's related to your ambulance and it kind of depends on, some cities don't have the ambulance service there. So that's, that's what I said, when you're not comparing apples to apples, it can kind of be a little bit tougher there. It just depends on what activities the city has going on, but yeah, a lot of that relates to ambulance charges there. And fire charges as well, kind of in with that, so. Are there any other questions that anyone had on this? Then looking at our debt service coverage in the enterprise fund. So here it's looking at your net operating revenue, looking at and comparing that to your debt service payment. So here, actually the higher the better, showing that the, the fund is bringing in enough revenue to cover your debt payments. So here, the higher the better. So in the top one, it looks, your water fund is doing, is very healthy. Then it's more than enough to cover, you could basically cover 400% or 350% of your debt payments. So it kind of looks a little goofy, but yes, the higher the better on these payments. For your sewer, you know, 2018, kind of right in line as well and not much of a change in 2019. So you're able to cover 150% of your debt payments, is what that's saying. And then this is your electric fund, it actually shouldn't be a big spike. 2018 should be closer around 140%, so as looking at that, I don't know how that happened. But that should be closer to 140% there. But we don't have any peer group data to compare to the electric fund for that one.
Erin, that slide didn't change for us here.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so, sorry about that. So yeah, you can see that this big dip here, it actually shouldn't have been, it should have been at 140. But yeah, we don't have any peer group data available for the electric fund. Does anyone have any questions or want to dig into anything further?
The segregation of duties. If we could.
Yeah. I guess I don't really have anything on that side. So yeah, ultimately you need basically four people in the office to be able to properly segregate all duties. And there's kind of a certain way of like authorizing, recording, and that, there's just certain trends or certain types of activities that need to be segregated by person, so not one person is involved in, in the whole process. Like I said, it doesn't mean that there are not any controls in place, because there are controls in place definitely at the city. It's just that there aren't enough for us to not have it in there. It's a super common finding in smaller entities where it just doesn't make sense to have the staff people there. But like I said, it just makes your job as council members that much more important, being that extra set of checks and balances, looking at things.
So if we're gonna, we're a small community, we don't have four or five people in the office to segregate the duties. Is there any policies that we could put in place to, to take away from that liability?
Yeah, for sure. So it's, it's looking at kind of mapping out what your current policies are and looking at, okay, is there any one transaction that there's one person way too involved in? And how can you split that up? So it's really kind of getting a baseline of what your current procedures are and then seeing where could we add in more checks and balances in place? Whether it's approval of time cards signing off, you know, like approval of invoices, which the, you know, the city already does. But things like that, that, you know, looking at, obviously, you know, there are certain areas that are more risky than others. You know, you look at payroll, that can be risky, whether it's withholding proper amounts or false employees, you know, things like that, that can be more of a fraud risk. Vendor payment can be very risky, so always looking at your check registers. You know, when you guys are approving payments, making, making sure that you're questioning things. If something looks odd or doesn't seem right, question that, ask to see backup. It's, you know, you can look at any time cash is involved, that's always a high-risk area. So there's, there's certain transactions that are more risky than others. And I think starting with some of those processes is probably the best use of your time. And the most, it's going to protect the city the most, if that makes sense. I mean, like I said, we have never come across fraud at the city, but also our, we don't do 100% testing of every single transaction. Of samples that we do test, we all, you know, we look and see, does this seem reasonable? Does it seem like a proper vendor? Does it, you know, we'll, we'll do tests on our side. Does that kind of help a little bit answer that question?
Yeah, I think so. I was curious if you had any specifics for us, that would help. But you, you gave us a couple of areas to look at.
Yeah, like I said, looking at any time payroll, any time checks run, you know, any time you're exchanging money obviously is a more risky area, whenever cash is involved, that's a risky area. So really looking at those processes to see, is there better controls that we could put in place? And sometimes it can be really simple things that don't take long, that you can just add that extra step in there that can help.
Another question that I had is about the water fund. Since it looks absolutely beautifully healthy, more healthy than it needs to be, is that something that we could look at having, I don't know, a study done to see if we can actually lower those rates?
Yeah, for sure. And I mean, it's, it's maybe one of those things that you look is, are, are the funds being properly allocated between? You know, because then you look at, you know, your sewer fund's doing okay, but there's not a ton of reserves in place there. And then your electric fund is kind of going down. Do you reallocate some of those funds and kind of change where those charges for services are going? So looking at that as an option. And also you could look at basically cash flowing, future capital needs in the water fund. So you're not necessarily paying debt out of that fund, you could cash flow future improvements for that fund as well.
Future water improvements.
Yeah, so when there's, so usually when there's a major capital improvement, you have a street portion, a water, a sewer portion of it. So each of those funds get their separate debt. So for one of those projects, if you wanted to, you could not bond for the water portion and then pay for that out of your reserves as an option.
Sure.
But yeah, so something to definitely look at, because yeah, like you said, obviously your water fund has some wiggle room there. But I think I would look at that option before looking at lowering the rates. I think that's, that's a tough thing to do. And then looking at down the line, oh shoot, maybe we shouldn't have lowered on, and then to raise them back up. Looking at, does something just need to be reallocated to the other funds? Or do you want to use it for future capital needs instead of bonding for it? That could be a better option. It's obviously totally up to you guys, but a couple options there.
Well, when we raised the water fund and the sewer fund, and I believe implemented the storm sewer fund and stuff, we talked about, you know, well, maybe we are raising that water fund a little bit too much. In the future, could we potentially lower it? Oh yeah, but now you're saying probably shouldn't do that, or?
I mean, you can, I mean, it's definitely an option. I mean, any, anything's an option. I mean, you have, like I said, you have a couple options, you could lower it. You could look and see, does it just need to be reallocated to the other funds? Whereas maybe you're dropping the water, but you're raising the electric or the sewer or whatever to kind of even those out a little bit more. Or cash flowing future projects, which then you're not paying those interest payments as well with those.
And then the electric fund, I know we had a study done about three years ago or something. So that would be another. So that would be another thing to look into. Maybe look at the plan that was presented in front of us, and then before we maybe do another study.
So I would think, I would think that the increase that was put in place wouldn't show up till
Next year, yeah.
Yeah, so right now, this was last year, so we raised the rate, so next year should
We should see
You should see something.
Yeah, and you can kind of see and compare, you know, what does it look like now, and kind of see what the trend is. How much cash did we increase from 19 to 20 to kind of see what those increases brought in?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, if at any time anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. At any time Amy has, any of us both have all of our contact information. And thank you for the opportunity. We enjoy working with your city, and I hope you guys find this information useful. And if there's something that you guys are looking to see and want to monitor, please let us know, because we're always looking for ways to make it better, make it more useful for you guys. So you say, the presentation is for you, for you guys to look at and monitor the financials for the city. So if there's anything else that you feel like we're missing, please let us know, and we are happy to modify and customize things for you guys, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Michael, could you give the lights, please? Thank you, Matt.
My eyes.
All right, item B, thank you, letter from the community giving hope.
I thought it'd add something positive. We often hear a lot of negative stuff, so I wanted to add this to the packet, because it was something positive, that came from community giving hope.
And they, year after year, they do positive things also. It's nice to see that they appreciate the help we're giving them. That's great. And MC, May meeting correspondents from the historical society.
Just included a copy of their minutes, they haven't been meeting, but Dwight shares his minutes with me, so I thought I would include them in packets. Just keep going. May 7th, planning and zoning, hopefully you had a chance to read those. You can stay caught up with planning and zoning. May 11th, EDA. We received this email on Friday from Representative Grunhagen about possible cares funding, but there was a follow-up email today that I forwarded out to you, that it doesn't look like we may get that money now.
To the votes, we got this today from the municipal city, said that it's still being negotiated, so.
Okay, so.
Looks like there might be
Let's
Something.
Hope.
Yeah.
I was thinking, you know, with the decrease, the COVID impact on this building and the lack of money, something, maybe that would help offset some of that.
Right, but the guidelines in there talked about things to recreate yourself, or whatever, COVID, not, I thought of that, too. It'd be nice to throw it in the community center fund, but I, that's not what the guidelines were for that money, so I don't think
They wouldn't include the loss of revenue.
No, I don't think so. That's not, that's not how I took it, anyhow, reading it.
Maybe that's, maybe that's why they're still negotiating it, maybe it's
Could be changed.
That's going to say, not just allocated for COVID, also to
Loss of revenue from
Because that wasn't
So much.
Right.
This, schedule, I had a meeting with McLeod Power, and every two years, they update their scheduled charges that they charge us to perform these things. They went up by about $2 apiece each. Not a huge change.
Are we under contract with them for a certain
Yes. I had asked to see a copy of the contract, because I have no idea where it is. Okay, so I didn't know they were going to look for it and get it to me.
Reason, reason I'm asking is from time to time, I hear comments in the community about, not necessarily that they feel McLeod is doing a poor job, but what would competition, maybe it's competition.
Okay.
It'll be good to hear.
I'll let you know, I'll follow up with them.
I agree.
Andrew.
Settle down there, buddy. That's right.
Right there. Make sure the microphone's on.
Be in later? Just be close.
So that you speak into it, because of the recording.
You got another one of those, too.
Yeah.
Feel free to speak.
Are you sure the mic's on? Now it's on. There we go. It looks green, even though it's not on.
Yeah, just here to talk about the, our day calls for service. In the report, there you see that the problem we had was 267 a month, with the listing of what the, the retract outs were the most popular. And put that in perspective, compare that to 2018, we have 41. We treated that, you probably will see all the responses, many of our responses are just inactive people, it's probably triggered by those services. The first date, we're at 1,587 dollars per service, so the average was about 71. Last year, the average was about 70. So we're down a little bit, but nothing real significant. And no major criminal investigations were reported.
Do you have any update on juveniles that were going around town and wreaking havoc?
Officer Knox, I guess, is a few of them, and he is working on some investigative things, so I know what else they're going to involve in, but yeah, James, he's got those kids in that practice, active work.
Okay.
Good.
So yeah, appreciate you guys having me on. If there's council members who have any questions,
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Do you carry the same number that John had, or do you say that? 25. Yeah, I just kind of took over his number, and it's been most of the day, just make sure I've been at all, computer systems that I need to get into, even made it up, got to talk to the business people, that's fun. Yeah, I feel like after, after a full day, I feel like
All right. Thank you. Good. Thank you. Okay, people's service report.
They are not here this evening. They were not planning, no one was planning to come from people's service tonight. So if you have any questions, let me know, and I will relay it back to Lee.
What is the update of revisiting the rates that juvenile was paying? Is it
September?
September. Okay. A real good indication of its history.
And as we get closer, we can, you know, how we're going in their wire usage and stuff like that, so we have
Correct.
And MC, planning and zoning update, Michael Podolski.
So we'll be on here a couple times, but for the most part, just wanted to highlight the order of annexation agreement that expired previous, that has been mentioned. So process for new agreement has begun, and I received information from Ross, and it was discussed at our meeting. And it's kind of just a binding contract on all parties in agreement to basically kind of have room for expansion when it comes, and have the ability to do so. And then on the map diagram that I have, it's kind of the county map that they have, the town plan, and it's yellow kind of shows the annexation area, and then the township's around Arlington Township. And then basically, the committee discussed possible steps to get an agreement arranged in the future, and has asked that I research the land use agreements, and compare ideas from what's in the con plan, so for the county, for this land, and I'm working on getting a report, or just something ready to present to the committee, and then I'll have that at the July 6th meeting, an update, an update for you guys, and that's written or in print.
Okay. Any questions on Michael? Thank you, Michael. Any meeting minutes? Nope, I'm sorry.
May financial report. Any questions about the May financial report? Don't we need to look into?
We should be what at, about 42%? Through the end of May?
So we're sitting sitting good.
Any questions?
36, overall, 36%. Yeah, it's good.
And a meeting in 2019 annual report from the Arlington Library.
I told Kathy that she did not have to come, if she did not want to due to COVID-19, I gave her the option that we could just go over it, and if you have any questions, we can let me know, and we'll follow up with Kathy.
Go ahead, if you want. Are you, do you want to run through it?
Don't have
Yeah.
I was gonna say, if you read through it, she talks about the number of programming. Looks like some of the attendance was down a little for 2019. This was for 2019, so.
Well, the economy was good. So it's typically, say about the library system, when the economy is good, the
Usage.
Slow down, but when the economy's bad, then they, they get a lot more business there.
Any questions on the library reports? Here now, we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions, resolution 34-2020, a resolution accepting an appointment for the vacancy. This would be in regard to the council's decision to appoint Matt Sharpie as a new council member, beginning from July 1st, I believe.
No, tomorrow, right? No. Tom will stay on through the end of the month, so we're not having a resolution to change that. Matthew will be appointed July 6th.
Sworn in July 6th, yeah.
Sworn in.
Okay, so I'm confused. So he's not on the council until?
July 6th, so he gets sworn in on July 6th.
Right, so the vacancy starts July 1.
Right, so we have four council people from July 1st to July 5th, and 6th, he's sworn in.
He's official.
He's official, and you can sit in. At that meeting.
He can sit in. He just can't vote right now.
Right.
Oh, let us, resolution 34-2020, adding Matthew Sharpie to fill the vacant council seat.
Resolution 34-2020 introduced by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchard. And this resolution is a resolution accepting an appointment to fill a vacancy in the city council. That appointment is for Matt Sharpie, Matthew Sharpie, to assume the position of council member, for the duration of the term being vacated by Tom Haddleson. Any questions on the resolution? Here now, vote by vote. Councilmember Omer.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchard.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none against, one absent. The resolution is adopted. Resolution 36.
35.
35-2020, resolution pending the oral appointments.
I would like to recommend for the ambulance committee, taking Laura Gimmell now, since she has a direct conflict of interest. And maybe applying somebody else. Maybe putting Matt on there, since he used to be an EMT, and is he getting more?
I thought of the same thing.
Okay, open for discussion.
You can amend the resolution, and whatever you would like.
Discussion on that.
Care to do it without her here?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's kind of like, she's gone for a month, and then she'll come back.
And she's off, though.
Yeah. I would suggest we probably wait until she can hear, have input.
No, make a motion to table resolution 35-2020.
Do we need to pass this one, though, and maybe revisit it? Because we have to put Matthew on these. We have to put Matthew, we can't.
We can certainly revisit that.
We already have vacancies on the council. He's really technically not on the council for our next meeting, anyhow. So he's technically
True.
Okay.
But I'm doing my meeting meetings
Through the
Until the first, until the first, at all, if nothing's getting passed.
Well, he can't do anything until he's sworn in.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, this, even if
We can table it.
We can just
Table, that was my motion.
I'll second the motion to table this until July 6th.
Laura's to be back at the beginning of July. Rich, will you speak with Laura about?
I can do that. I can do that, yes. Motion by Councilmember Batchard, second by Councilmember Adrien, to table resolution 35-2020. It is a resolution that's made in all the cities, should be taken up at the July 6th. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes.
Do you know who, another reason I ask is to explain to Amy that before I'm gone, I would go through with whoever the council member is going to be on cable commission, I kind of go through the program with them, let the cable commission people know who the new is, Doc Coquelin, so everybody knows what's happening, so. It will be
It will be
I got a lot of stuff for you. Thank you.
Resolution 36-2020, a resolution for giving facade improvement loan to hip hop family shop.
They have remained in business for a year, so they fulfilled their obligation from the EDA facade improvement program to have their loan forgiven.
We'll introduce resolution 36-2020, forgiving facade improvement loan to hip hop family shop from the EDA improvement loan program.
Second.
Who's that, Joe?
Resolution 36-2020, introduced by Councilmember Batchard, second by Councilmember Morgan, is a resolution for giving the facade improvement loan to hip hop family shop from the Arlington EDA facade improvement loan program, for project at 339 West Main Street. Any questions on the motion, on the resolution? Here now, vote by vote, call Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchard.
Yes.
Councilmember Adrien.
Yes.
Four members in favor, none opposed, one absent, the resolution is adopted. Item 13, Seneca Trailer Park, Councilmember Morgan.
Get them in.
Yeah, so the last meeting, so I guess my request is to retract my motion for the eviction. You know, thinking about it the day and two after, the evening was a little tense on a couple of topics. I guess I would consider my motion a knee-jerk reaction to I guess I would consider my motion a knee jerk reaction to some stuff that was mentioned and discussed. And probably, I should say, it wouldn't be the typical way that I would. Of, you know, want to handle that situation. So I think it's best to take that out and maybe look at another avenue. And work with the property owner and whatnot to come up with a better solution.
The motion itself read to. It was by Morgan, and it was second by council member Hattles to issue a letter to property owner Sidewick. Would you, then your motion would be to rescind that, in other words, not to issue that?
Yeah, not issued.
Okay.
It's why not much that hasn't happened, so.
It hasn't been sent out.
So then motion probably could be, a motion by Morgan to cancel the issuance of a letter to property owner Sidewick. Would that be appropriate?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion by council member Morgan, second by council member Bachelor, to. Issue or to cancel the issuance of a letter to property owner Sidewick stating the mobile home park is in violation and so on, so on, so. Any questions on the motion to rescind? Here now, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? This is scary. Anyone else have input on the trailer park? Mike, did you have anything you wanted to say on it?
Well, I would like to move forward, work in the city. You know, we've done this for years, so conditional use permit, we'd like to continue. Seneca relies on that heavily, especially in a situation like this one. I heard a lot of comments that were not facts or hearsay. That bothered me quite a bit. I'd like to move forward, I don't know when it takes to break in the records, but I can keep it there. But Dave, Dave bought those from us and we have a lease agreement with Dave that continues on. I'm just kind of surprised that all this all went down. Keep working with the city and with Dave's. Got a lot of business people that learned about this, saw either way, that were concerned for their own businesses and stuff, concerned for us. It appears that some money's well spent in town, even though all that's all like business housing, they also have seventy people in there. But a lot of business places appreciate this, and that's how I learn about it. Otherwise, it's sort of unannounced, unjudged.
I agree with Mike, very surprised that it even happened. You know, we'll work whatever to, you know, make it right. I think we got a good, decent thing there that provides, you know, some community income. And my comments that I got calls from, from the restaurant and the guy at hardware store and the grocery store guys, they didn't spend money on this town. We want them. So very surprised all it went down. I'm glad this just happened, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Can I give a little background information? I spoke with the League of Minnesota Cities about this because they are a mobile home park in an I two right now. According to the League of Minnesota Cities, we have to, a city has to grant a conditional use permit in any zoning district to a mobile home park. And they had been granted annual conditional use permits by the county when that was township. The League of Minnesota Cities suggests not annual conditional use permits. Once you grant a conditional use permit, it's like an easement, it goes with the property. And our conditional use permit application is two hundred and fifty dollars. And it is a public hearing approved by planning and zoning and then by the council. That was the recommendation of the League of Minnesota Cities, is that we move forward with a conditional use permit for that property. And then they will be, the zoning will be proper.
So we talked a little bit about that at the planning and zoning meeting this month. And Dave, are you still standing firm as this is how you feel? You've done like you always already have?
When a city, this is our understanding, I'm a Polish law professor, okay? So. So I'm not an expert, but this is what people tell me is that when a city annexes property, they dig it with the good with the bad. And. That was what it was before in city, and that's what it is many years after, it can see whatever it's five, ten years, whatever. And, and like I said, the finding is already made, I'm not gonna apply for a permit that I think I already have. Therefore, it would be saying to you, okay, I know I'm not in compliance, but I'll sign this and if I get voted down, then I'm screwed. And, and many good things happen between Sidewick and the city of Arlington on the housing part, but nothing good has happened at that property. So I'm going to want to go with it. I think we're done, I don't know how you can get around that, if you just want to issue me the initial use permit and I'll pay a fee or whatever, but I'm not gonna apply for one. For some reason, I believe I am.
Ross, can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you want to say anything about the conditional use permit for the Seneca Trailer Park?
Well, it's in kind of a gray area because the county conditional use permit that would be the basis for grandfathering it in. For some reason, the county drafted those for a year at a time. And as I understand it from the records that Seneca provided, the last one that was granted was in twenty fourteen. So I think that, well, under the circumstances, if the city felt inappropriate, it could waive that conditional use permit fee. Because when this property was annexed to the city, I guess neither the owner nor the city were aware of the past history with the county on those conditional use permits. So that's just a thought. And a future conditional use permit would just be a way of, you know, officially documenting the grandfathering provision. And setting, you know, certain standards that I believe they have to follow anyway under state regulations.
So Ross, do we have to have the whole public hearing and all that sort of stuff to go along with it? Or is that something that the council can? Put into a resolution or something?
Well, that's a good question. I, I think I'd have to research that. In essence, I guess what we would be doing is renewing, you know, the old conditional use permit from the county. But since the city is a different jurisdiction, I'm not sure we can piggyback onto theirs or not. That's an interesting question.
Well, if they were in compliance when the property was annexed in and they were under the county's CUP at the time. That would grandfather over. No?
Well, it would normally accept, Sibley County, for some strange reason, didn't have an open-ended conditional use permit. Each one they granted over the years was for one year at a time. So that's the part that's a little strange. And in my discussion with the League of Cities, they thought it was also strange. Conditional use permits are supposed to be open-ended. You know, in other words, no, no set termination date.
Isn't that who we need to be in compliance with, is the League of Minnesota Cities?
Yes, I think it's.
Correct.
We brought this up at the, or I brought this up at the last meeting, and it was the general consensus of everybody on the EDA. That they give Mr. Sidewick the option of getting the conditional use permit that was one's up to date and current. And allow him to have all the trailers and people from Seneca there. That was their recommendation. I believe it was unanimous, but, but, yes, without this renewal.
No.
That, that, doing that with the conditionally use for, that's what was unanimous.
So like.
But then renewing that on an annual basis, because that's not.
That's not a thing. Typically, you get it and it's done.
Right.
Unless it gets taken away, which.
Unless it gets taken away, yeah.
Right, it is not to interrupt it. We, we, and Ross, thank you, well said. I just want to add that Seneca does the state, you know, it's also licensed through the state as an inspection. So we're, you know, that's been continuing and will continue to do that, and that'll, that's another process and separate by the state. So that's an annual inspection we talked about.
The trailer park.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in addition to the thing. So if we're not in compliance there for whatever reasons, you know, that would come up too. So it's not like we're just, we know what we want, we got a couple of different checks and balances.
Do they inspect everything, inside, outside, or?
Exterior.
Exterior. I don't. Exterior.
Not structural.
Gas hookups, you know, stuff like that, separations. Make sure they're safe as far as that.
So. Moving on, I suppose we have to figure out whether or not.
Ross.
Sounds like Ross.
We'll have to check if we can grant them a conditional use permit without going through the procedures that you normally go through. So that's where we.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's one question we can pose to the league, yes.
So is this something we can work on and bring it up for a final decision at our July meeting, July sixth meeting? For the next step, at least.
And we do have an awkwardly large amount of time being that the way Mondays fell during this month. So there is well than enough days, there's about ten or twelve, almost three weeks before the planning and zoning meeting and then after that is council. So if they did have to go through the process, Ross, if you can hear me okay, we probably have to get an answer by the twenty-third or twenty-four. So we get it in the paper, we do have to go through the planning and zoning process for it.
For a hearing is what you.
If there's a hearing.
So they can have a public hearing.
So we can still address everything as normal for the council, we can at least try to get that. Let's still go back to Dickie for that point, are you open to that?
Well, I.
I mean, if that's what we have to do.
I just don't want to get, you know, Shanghai here, I get, and I just. Just kind of a weird thing, you know, and I talked about the plan zone, you know, existing non-conforming, you know, our business in Jordan, large business, we're an industrial, we have a retail store. It's not allowed. We're existing non-conforming, it's always been there, so they allow it, they don't have a conditional use permit for it or anything. And. And comparing it to that, I know it's not exactly the same, but I, and like I said before, I just don't want to be in a position where I'm applying for something, I get denied. And then it's too late.
I don't think they're gonna get denied.
Yeah.
No, I don't think that's.
Well, you can talk for yourself, Tom, like I always say, I'm only one of many.
Yeah, well.
I mean, and I understand where you're coming from, especially what happened at the meet, this meeting last time.
Yeah, well, and then I can go back, and I don't want to like bring up the past, but I think that this whole deal with our tenant and the heck guy in the Seneca building. You know, one case to the next, it was like, it was a whole different thing, and I don't know what happened in between. And I don't know if I have all the information, but I felt that. A lot of things changed and it wasn't in our favor, and I don't want that to happen again.
So is there something we have to do in the interim?
Ross has to check into it, there's nothing we can do on the.
But there's no letter being sent out or nothing?
No, I understand that, I heard all that.
Just sort of in the limbo until July sixth meeting. All right, this will be then brought up for discussion and recommendation at the July sixth council meeting, and if some of the statements done by the city administration and city attorney.
Okay.
We want you to do business, July fifteen, discussion of modern sewer service and policy.
I wanted to clarify something on this because in April, I sent out a letter to someone who had, I took their name off of here. But they had a leaky valve on Main Street, so it's running pretty rapidly on Main Street. Someone had alerted me in April, so I stuck the letter in their mailbox, asked them to call me, they called me later that day, we talked about it, they were gonna fix it. They still haven't fixed it. According to our policy, if they don't fix it, we can eventually go in and fix it, but there's no timeline. Do we wait thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, one year? How long do I give them before we go in and fix it and then build them?
Are you saying they had a leaky valve in their house?
No.
Business place, where was the valve?
It's a water valve, it's on the sidewalk, it's right next to the sidewalk.
It's a city shut-off, is it a city shut-off?
It is a homeowner's responsibility, though.
Okay, that's what it was leaking?
That's what's leaking.
And they still haven't fixed it?
They still have not fixed it. April ninth is when I talked to this homeowner. So how long do I give them? The policy doesn't specify how long they have.
So it's still just leaking water, nobody's been built for it.
And I talked to people's services, this has happened in the past, someone went a whole year and then it damaged the sidewalk and then they, then it was up to the homeowner, though, to make those repairs, but it gets worse.
I would like to see.
It's before, but it's still their responsibility, anything that comes out from the streets and it's in the policy that it's their responsibility.
Is it on the south side of the main street?
They're not paying for that leaking, though.
No.
Yes.
So the policy states anything after or the middle of the street.
Here, it's up there. Number two.
Right away, right? Is the responsibility. And then the rest is the responsibility, the city. To shut off the responsibility.
From the city's water main up to the property.
Can we have the water, is there like a committee that's gonna overlook this policy? That's if it does.
We have a committee that specifically looks at water. The streets committee could look at it.
Maybe, and put it like a timeline in there? I would say thirty days, I mean, if it's water, if it was.
Well.
Once they're notified, that's a, that's a, but I mean, not saying that it would apply for this one. I mean, I say that we give this person until July first to get it done, otherwise, we're gonna fix it and then they'll be built.
Just do advantage.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, that would be my suggestion, is thirty days.
I can.
On the streets committee, so I would say throw that back to the committee, let them hash out how long it should be.
But on this one, we need to make.
On this person who's been, we had two, one of them gave us the go-ahead to have the city, when Murphy was in town, to fix it. And this one hasn't done anything.
I'll make a motion to have a community have, have any make communication with this property owner to have them repair the shut-off before July first. Otherwise, the city will go in and fix it and then build.
Thank you.
Three months.
Three, oh, three months.
The first day of the month, yeah.
How bad is this valve?
Pretty bad.
I mean, we're talking.
You can see the water running.
Drip, drip, drip out of the back of the.
It's more than a drip.
We could be talking fifty thousand gallons of water going.
You can see the water running.
If we let it.
I didn't know exactly which house, but I found it just by walking out there.
It'll go two weeks. We gotta have a big mess. I guess I'm just concerned about. An average homeowner going out there and trying to fix this thing and all of a sudden now we've got a major mess, dude. I mean, are we gonna tell them that they gotta have the city turn it off or call people services or, I mean.
Well, there's some digging to be done here.
They have to hire someone to fix it. Well, they have looked.
If I was responsible for something leaking water and they're gonna tell me I gotta pay for it, you better believe them.
Okay, but you're maybe handy that you could probably do maybe something.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that, I mean.
I don't think I would go out there and try and fix it myself.
Well, I don't know who this person is and I'm just, and they may be Murphy and all of a sudden they're out there with a. A dress or a ratchet. They like to. We got. How's the gallons of medicine?
Is this located in the sidewalk? Is this located in the sidewalk? Okay, so they'd have to know sidewalk.
They're gonna have to dig.
Yeah, I know exactly where it is.
I mean, and that being the landlord's, the landowner's responsibility. It's almost like you should be the ones to fix it and bill them anyway. To Joe's point of who do you trust? Do you trust them to go and find somebody that's qualified to fix it? Or are they just gonna Google how to fix it themselves and possibly cause more damage? I don't know.
There would, there are people that would do that.
Right?
You do have, or do you think everybody has like a one of those slidetail things a little bit or break up concrete? Okay, well, all right.
So streets committee, we should be changing that language. We want to consider changing the language that the city. I am, according to that, I dug out the policy.
Tell me I'm responsible and you better believe I wanna be calling and ask personally, I'd have to turn the water off if I didn't go ahead. If you're telling me I gotta pay something.
That's what it says right now.
Imagine how much water's leaked out of there already in two, over two months.
That's why I said we need to do, what do I do? What can I do with them?
The motion is to have uh, tell my July.
So I want to fix it or we'll fix it.
Or the city will fix it.
Can I add to that? I would like to have somebody on the schedule. Like July two.
What do you?
Or just temporarily, just you know, fix it.
I can't guarantee somebody that's around fourth of July that we'd have a contractor ready to fix it. We have to contact Jerby or something.
That's up to Kirby and you to book somebody to fix it.
Could we just turn the water off?
Fairly.
Yeah, just turn the water off. Let's stop.
Is it, but if the leak is before the shut off or after, I guess that's.
It's before the shut off. It's out there on the street.
So then.
We shut the neighbors off.
No, it's.
If it's before the mess. What happens if that thing breaks all the way in the next three days? Then now we got a real mess.
Now, they have a lot bigger, they have a lot bigger bill now, don't they?
Yeah, but that's. Let it leak and hope it doesn't leak worse and let's pay for the water until someone gets around to fixing it.
Okay, motions for uh to have the homeowner do it by July first. The motion is made. Is there a second? Is there a second?
The fifteenth.
It'd be two weeks, basically.
To find a contractor.
Well, they've had two months. I'll second it.
Okay, motion by council member Vacher, second to council member Ron Ryan to inform the homeowner that they have until July first, twenty twenty. To repair the leak in their water line in front of their house. Any more discussion?
Do they have to repair the sidewalk and such to them?
If it's been damaged by the water.
Have to tear it up.
They'll have to fix it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Suppose no?
No.
No.
Tiebreaker. Tiebreaker, rich.
That hasn't happened for a while.
Get the vote on this.
The heck of it is back probably shortly before eight one nights, we walked past it two times and I told my wife, this shouldn't be leaking.
I mean, I wish I knew.
So I let Kirby know.
Well, I didn't know what it is either.
Can we just have Kirby walk by?
It's people's service, actually, that we need to fix this.
I don't know.
I don't know, maybe.
They won't touch it. They said it's the homeowner's responsibility.
No, I get that, but.
I'm gonna vote with the affirmative. Uh, motion passes on the three to. All right, item sixteen, approval of the United was to the sideways instruction.
I think we skipped.
Did we skip something?
We did. Okay.
We did skip.
We did skip.
We skipped number fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Um.
But we can.
City telephone unless you want to deal with.
Dave's still here. Why don't we, we can come back to.
Deal with the villa homes right now. My phone, I'm sorry.
I just realized it too. I'm like, wait, I think we skipped the phones, but uh, this came from the last EDA meeting. We had discussed, uh, I had been discussing with Dave about building eight villa homes on uh, the property by the Horse Arena. That has um, that's stepped out for sixteen different properties. He's asking about building eight villa homes on there and talked about the cost of putting in a driveway to that property. The EDA recommended that we offer Mr. Sywak sack and whack waivers for each villa totaling thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, also an incentive like we did with Scott Equipment to put a drive into the villas of twenty thousand dollars. A total subsidy package from the city of Arlington, the amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred, coming from the EDA funds. Except for the sack and whack, but the twenty thousand dollar subsidy would come from the EDA funds.
Mr. Savage, would you like to explain your project, please?
Well, I was complaining before about challenges with the city of Arlington on the Senate. Over at these houses, it's been nothing but good. It's been a great Darren, you know, Darren or Darrow, whatever.
Darren.
Darren.
There's been good to work with that our contractor that's overseeing it's going good. The houses are all selling as we build them. All the houses are selling around them for way more than people think. They couldn't, uh, they said they couldn't get uh, their basels up enough before and now they are. So hopefully when we're done, you know, some of these other lots might get built on. The target of Don Savage, I think he said he wants a lot here, maybe some will happen. So uh, encouraged by that, thanks for everyone for that. So this other lot is here, it's, it's, that came with. It's planted at sixteen individual lots and it's set up for sixteen forty minute uh, there you go.
There it is.
Uh, and that will never happen in Arlington. So I'm trying to come up with another option and then talking to Amy, I, I said, I either want to go one or two houses here. Because the price of lots are so inexpensive, it doesn't make sense to try to do something else. And during the discussions and talking to the, the planning and zoning, we came up with maybe if we just build eight rental villa houses. And the driveway is a lot cheaper because it'd be a private road and it'd be retained by Sywak's or one of our partners. And just have the rental houses and, and we're doing a similar project. We're just starting right now in Howard Lake. But we're building thirteen of these villa houses, houses that will remain rentals. And uh, it's really uh, the city Howard Lake is working with us. Uh, they actually own the lands. We get the lots from them. Uh, and they're willing to store a lot of feeds. They, they waived all these assessments. There was a thirty thousand dollar per lot assessment for the street. That they waived, so that's gonna move forward really small. But I sent Amy the pictures of plant analysis. I, I don't.
Haven't shared them with anyone yet, but.
They're a slam on grade house, they're two and three bedroom. And they're just nice and simple and, you know, for people, the idea of Howard Lake, the idea is for people that are moving in off the farm or whatever. That don't have the money or want to get a mortgage at age fifty, sixty or seventy, but they're not ready to go into the system living of the old folks home. So they can have independent living there in a pretty nice spot. I think it'll be, be pretty good. It'll be affordable, you know, for rent to get that, you know, all figured out. And we think we can build those wells with your participation for a hundred, two hundred thousand feet. So that would put the rent at about, you know, twelve to fourteen hundred dollars, two to, and three bedroom, which is really affordable. So that's, that's what Amy and I and the gang came up with and, and if you guys uh, you know, are willing to do that subsidy. We, we would accept that and, and start replating. The lots, I'm not sure if these are involved in replating, but hopefully it's not all.
Michael, do you know? Nothing or you don't know?
No, I don't. It's assessing the county, I assume. I'm not sure about replating fees or anything.
You'll have to replant.
It's through the county and it would get assessed.
Well, you know, there's a big need for um, uh, that transition housing for, for older. Older families, older individuals. So it'd be a huge need, a, a huge gap. That would be filled by, by having to go those.
They're saying, for sure, yeah, Howard Lake, they're saying, we don't have anywhere for the cop or the teacher or, you know, even younger professionals. They don't want to live above the barn town. That's the only apartment that's available. Uh, so.
For tax purposes, are they taxed as a group or are they individual?
Individual.
Right now, we got sixteen tax payments, believe it or not, for that. So it'll be, it'll change to eight tax.
Okay, so you can do it. So you could technically in the future, you could sell.
No, because we're not putting the city street and I guess we'll, we'll work with.
You could, it could be one if they're gonna be rentals. You might want to check on that.
Yeah, we're working with this uh, Marty Champion, I don't know. He's like an engineer designer or whatever. So I'm thinking, yeah, one task. Because you couldn't sell them one by one, really. Because.
If they're, yeah. Depends if you want to sell them in the future. They does, each have to have their own PID, but if it's just gonna be one, like apartment.
There's different rules for development. If it's gonna be a street. Or if it's gonna be a drive.
Then you might want to have it one.
And then you gotta pull the.
Parcel.
They can help with fire truckers, school bus.
Right.
Cause it's far enough back from the street and all that stuff. So I think, well, I'll go by their recommendation.
Yeah.
That's, that's the plan. And uh, you know, if that's gonna cost ten or twenty or thirty thousand, we'll have to relook at it, but it's.
Shouldn't really just cost them the cost of replating.
I'll see what he says. Oh, we're waiting for this, so.
We brought this up with the EDA, it was another topic. And again, I believe Kurt, tell me if I'm wrong. Every EDA member supported this.
Yeah. This was unanimous.
Okay, so we do need to, as a council, approve the proposal.
Is there a number on that thing?
Does the ED, or does the um. Uh, planning and zoning have to re, raise, resell it because it's own.
Multi-family.
It's owned or three multi-family and that would still be multi-family from my understanding. It goes from sixteen to eight. I'd say anything less than that, that it probably individual. But I can double check on that, but I don't think it would.
So it doesn't need anything depending on zoning?
It would still be, it kind of think like townhomes and their rental units, it's kind of similar. That's the way I envision it, gonna be two to three, maybe only one family in there, but it's multi within the same area. Um, but that'd be something to ask when it gets reassessed, uh, and then we can do that process. But I think it's the same zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve. Mr. Sywak building eight villa homes in that area. Giving him the whack and sack reduction or elimination of the fee and twenty thousand dollar payment from the EDA. For like adding cost.
Second.
Motion. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, what about the park fee? There was an email sent about the park fee, so um, put it back. Was it, I assume some was paid to a park fee that was developed originally.
Park dedication fee.
That's part of that development. That's what I was, it says back in the whole thing, because we bought the rest of the development.
It was paid by the contractor who bought it at that time?
That's what I think.
Okay, we'll look into it.
I don't wanna.
Pay it twice.
But that could, what, what did you say in the email? Could be five thousand or more.
I think it was five percent of the total land value or the value of the property. Um, that was only based off the P schedule, which by the time it goes through or is finished through, it could be changed. But that was the only place I found it, was in the city's P schedule.
I think that was already.
Already paid.
In the park dedication fee or fund. And I think that they opted not to spend the money on trails, because that was the big thing then. And they opted to update that um, uh.
Friends of Park.
It's not friends of, what's behind the hospital?
Oh, behind hospital.
Hospital.
It's not the hospital. Thank you, fair view.
Yeah, cause that's how I understand. It wasn't that long ago that we would have had something in place when we did that whole development.
Yeah, I think when they, when they um, first plotted it all out, those park dedication fees.
They paid it.
I mean.
Well, I'll double check.
I think.
I will double check.
Lot of money that.
I'll check.
I think, I think.
So if it was already taken care of, then he doesn't have to pay.
Right, I think, yeah, I think it works, but.
Check. I'll check.
Okay, motion by council member Hattleson, second to council member Venture to approve the proposal to the sandwich and construction. Uh, terms would be the sack and whack waiver from the city of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. And incentive uh, for the construction of the villas of twenty thousand dollars for a total subsidy of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose no? Motion is carried.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go up to fourteen, upgrading city telephone, that was Michael.
Alright, so I have um, kind of a side by side comparison of a couple options for homes. Um, so essentially taking what we have currently in the economy conference, very basic on surface, um, there's not a lot to it. It's just a phone, they charge forty dollars for the main line and thirty dollars for the line thereafter. I added up everything from the city and multiplied it. I have UMA on there, which is a similar option. Um, and then coordinated business systems.
It's actually your best.
Um, which is.
Bang for your buck.
And I was thinking with that one, it also comes with, they come in to set everything up. It um, does have some fees to get started, but they come in, they're gonna make sure internet test, well, they're gonna make sure Amy, Jane, they all know what they're doing. And I also put in there, added all the lines the city has, and then we can have the fire department EMS building over there reset up. Same three two. And then this phone system, what it has is uh, it's voice over IP. So then there's gonna be voicemail line, get back to it. And what's gonna be important is maybe multiple lines could be set up for Amy to wear. If it's the EDA, press one. If it's planning and zoning, press two. That could be switched. So then there's direct lines for everything, for the different departments.
That would be very helpful, especially if we don't fill Michael's position right away and I'm trying to field all these calls.
No, or the other.
This is coordinated.
And I reached out to you on the CS, you could explain some things as well, but I have very, it's in the previous packet and I'll take more information. From my recommendation, basically saying why coordinated business systems would be.
I spoke with Andrew about these options too, because he asked me about UMA this morning. He came in and we went through some stuff. And he was all for coordinated because they would come in and help us set up and show us how to use everything.
Coordinated is really good with their training.
That's what we need.
Time that you need training, whether it be, and I know you're just swinging phones, but whatever you have. They are so open and, and wanting to come up.
Yeah, they came to visit me when I first started here and they were very helpful and they haven't really pushed us. But we, I told Michael to get more options.
They won't push, but they're always there.
They're always, yeah.
And then another thing is uh, you go about your day sitting at your desk, well, they work around you setting everything up. She just be able to plug it in and they do everything. So Amy would just continue to do whatever, um, and go about her day. And all of a sudden, she's done. They say, alright, girl, set up. They show her how to do it. She's ready to go.
Yeah, they have sheets and stuff.
I like that idea.
Um, so do we um. We have this budgeted?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask, is it in the budget for this year?
Yeah, that had actually well over, I think fifteen thousand is the budget.
Budgeted for the bonds.
So, and this is an estimate, after doing the EMS building, I'm guessing it still wouldn't go up too much. I'm calling it the EMS building, but now the services over there, they have a couple lines, but it probably wouldn't go up over eight after getting them set up. Cause they may have to do another setup fee and another scheduled date and everything, but it still should be well under, I guessing, the ballpark of eight. Cause they may have to do another setup fee and another schedule fee and everything, but it still should be well under, I guessing, the ballpark of eight.
The boys down at the city garage is is gonna be on the same, be able to transfer stuff down there and everything, right?
It should all be one, that's why we're hoping to just be.
Long, long overdue.
I don't have to figure.
The phones are not good, I. I can't get into my voicemail messages yet.
Which we've all used before.
Do we want a decision on this to make, or are we ready?
I think we're ready for a decision, we'd like to get moving on this.
I I'd make a motion to um uh have coordinated business systems uh install our phones. Purchase our phone service through them.
So I just, it was said this isn't a firm price, so.
Yeah, I didn't give a price.
Do we wanna do a not to exceed, or do we want to just wing in this, knowing this will be close?
Very confident would be under ten, still thirty percent under the, thirty-three percent under what's budgeted. And it should, I don't want it to be any more than eight. Okay, if it comes over budget, then you need to bring it back to a sub of.
Well, that's what we have budgeted for.
Fifteen is what you budgeted for this.
I'll still second, this is this, this is, so this is just getting the new phone, this is the annual.
This is the annual too.
So I took the user license, it's only twenty-two.
So media now is current?
Yeah.
Cost is seven thousand.
And that's just the phones, the internet, yep, for a year.
Now you're throwing out ten thousand, we're throwing out fifteen thousand.
Sure.
What's next year gonna cost?
It's, from what they say and what's in the packet that I presented from last time, it's just that set.
So that would be the actual cost.
The internet's the only thing I can change, you can go higher or lower on that, or September eighteenth is when our. So that's the, that's the factor that can change, that's just taking our current prices.
You can get into a contract with MediaCom or Jaguar or.
Any of them, correct.
Any of them, and then the longer the contract, the lower the price.
Correct, I would assume so.
But the, so the.
And it's.
The budget amount that was budgeted was to just purchase new phones. Still have the existing. Um and we're saying that for, right now it's reading sixty-one hundred, which we're not even really having a user budget, because essentially, it's gonna be ongoing, or we gotta pay that right away?
Is what I believe was requested, seeing the side-by-side comparison of the different ones um in the.
For the year.
For the year.
Yes, but you're throwing out that there's not all the phones from there, so right now.
It is all of the phones, it's ten, so the lines are only two, twenty-two fifty a month.
Are you asking?
Per line, times that by ten, so we have roughly ten months.
The purchase price of the phones, is that what you're putting it, or would you?
Well, you know, if I'm looking at seven, seven thousand seventy-eight dollars versus sixty-one hundred, absolutely all day. But then we're hearing other conversation about, you know, well, this phone isn't in there, we're not sure.
Their um, their phones are free, it's their service that they have, and if there's anything that changes, of course, if there are any changes, you get that contingency. Didn't go through yet, and it could come back to council for for approval. But that's what it was, just the twenty-two fifty, I took the estimate from their quote um per line, times that by ten, and so the services, that's for everything, I don't believe it's gonna be, it's their services for the city of Arlington. It would be the twenty-one ninety-eight, um the conference phone line, that's just so we have a basic one for the office.
The six eighty would be the cost for, to set up, is that our one time?
Yeah, is that in there?
That's not.
It's in the fair.
Chart.
Cause that wasn't a comparison with the current ones, but.
Okay. So motion means to work with coordinated to proceed with uh changing out our phone system to work with coordinated. No dollar amount involved in the motion, is that right? Cause we don't really have.
Not to exceed fifteen thousand, ten thousand? Ten thousand?
It's not annual, is it?
No.
That's a one-time fee for installation.
Well, that's what I'm trying to.
So it's a one-time fee.
Six hundred eighty dollars.
That's the six eighty.
That's what it was.
Correct, the bottom, way down in the bottom of my print, lower right.
Six eighty.
The sixty-one hundred right now is the total for whatever total.
Yearly cost.
There's no fee for the current ones that we have, so I couldn't put that in comparison line for MediaCom or UMA.
So we do that. The other thing is, is UMA, you'd have to buy your own phones, and MediaCom, you'd have to buy your phones. Phones probably cost about two hundred and fifty bucks each. Possibly, yeah, that's about what they cost for like a IP phone. And then we have how many phones, thirty phones, twenty phones? No more than ten.
Ten.
Ten phone altogether? Four, five? Really? Just ten?
Current lines we're paying for, based off of the MediaCom numbers, there's ten lines.
I'm just trying to make sure the cost next year isn't gonna go up on just the operating cost, if you take. Granted, there's a screen, um if we're saying we're gonna open it up to ten thousand, now we had seven thousand this year, we're gonna be ten thousand next year. We lost three grand.
Right, I was, right, I was under the impression this is the installation fee for it.
All of this was in a previous packet, and the information was there, built upon the previous information, and you need all that to pile from the July sixteenth.
So for installation, it shouldn't cost not even a thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's a one-time six eighty, and that was uh community center here was the four something or that, and then they got a wire and set up their phone for the basic line service. And that was the community center here, the only difference is I don't have a quote for the EMS building or anything like that, but that would only be the installation. It was pricing for the service and the phone.
So is the price right here for MediaCom just, is it apples to apples right now? Is is that MediaCom price?
That's what we're.
Just. Just for here, just like you.
Everywhere, the whole city.
It's the whole city.
But you don't have the correct amount for coordinating for the whole city?
That is for the whole city, I don't have a quote for installation, because we didn't get.
Okay. Okay, I understand you now, okay.
Me too.
So the six, sixty-one hundred is gonna be our fee for the whole city.
I think anyone ever phone, but you were just talking about.
I get what you, I just got it now too.
The six eighty setup fee? No, that's where he says that it might be more.
Oh, that part. Nothing else, yeah, that's the quote I got from them.
Yeah, that's what I took it as, that's what I made.
I get it now too. So.
And then also, speaking of another building, are you gonna put something in the Lion Center?
If there's anything there, there wasn't anything that I saw in our.
There's no phone number.
Well, there was a payphone number.
It wasn't working. When the remodel was done, it was, we picked up the receivers, nothing.
The library is there?
They are, as their own line, they were, that's so, breaking it down, so there is picture of the main lines that you call, you call the library, the police department, the fire department, EMS. Uh and then you have city auditor, that's the five main lines, and then I gave, Nikki said they could probably use two more lines. And then we only have three sidelines, Amy's, mine, and Lisa's, and then we have the conference side. So then that was all part of those five and five.
So can, could you put one in the kitchen?
There is a kitchen, and that was, it's off by one. Their basic line, it was ten bucks.
Right, to just have, yeah, to have like your little.
Basic five hundred minutes shouldn't go over.
Does it just not work if you go over, or?
That it already. Times on, there is no rush, but I did the math on council meeting per year, the kitchen isn't used now, so it's tough to know. Um I, it's more so an emergency phone, so I doubt all's still hanging out very often, and nowadays, if a caterer is there. Um they're gonna have their cell phones or their own phones, that's more so if they need to quick call, I don't know, it's a staff number, so. But all the current phones we have came up with those numbers.
Yeah, I have no problem with it costing twelve hundred dollars for the setup. You know, we're so well below, and honestly, the setup for this, if he, he, he billed it for fifteen thousand. We're saving fourteen thousand dollars for coordinated to put this in. Because this, the lines up there are just the.
That's comparing the yearly costs.
Yeah, so we don't pay the sixty-one hundred day one?
No, that's.
No, that's our yearly, divide that by twelve.
Yeah, no, I'm just clarifying, that's the way, I mean, the way I look at it, it's like.
I just assumed you want a yearly, yearly.
Well, you got an annual cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The total, okay, it's it's five oh eight, two bucks, a month. I took that times as like twelve.
Yeah, so I have a motion.
I don't, who did this second?
There was a second by Hattleson.
Tom?
Are we gonna put a dollar amount not to exceed fifteen thousand or not? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Yes?
Five, that took that about five thousand.
Or just a, you say it, you're the one that's authoring the motion.
Five thousand for installation?
I don't even think it's gonna be that much, I mean, two thousand, we could even go to, how does two thousand sound to everybody?
Good.
Michael?
That was my confident assumption, that it wouldn't go over eight for this annual cost, not installation.
Motion by Bachelors, second by Hattleson, to move ahead with working with coordinated business systems uh for new phone installation system. Not to exceed for the installation cost, right?
Thank you.
Not to exceed two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye. If there's no, motion carried.
You didn't have to vote on that.
No, it was alright to, you lost me in the.
Whoa, what's going on?
Okay, now back down to item seventeen, is that correct?
Correct.
Item seventeen.
This is to approve the hiring of Daniel Hughes as the maintenance worker that's replacing Mike Willemson. I put this on rather than on the consent agenda, because I went back and forth with Daniel, spoke to him on Friday. He wasn't sure about the wage range. I told him I would go up to step three, which would be eighteen seventy-three, but he told me he wouldn't take it unless he could get nineteen forty-eight. Which is at step four already, so I did explain to him, as he's not worked for government before, how it works, we have step increases. We're not private, so once you hit your step six, which is the top of your pay range, which is where this is at. Then he won't get increases unless council approves COLA increases. But they could come back and ask to have that wage range redone. Tom?
What does that do to our pay equity by changing that job up, starting that high? Or say, future job?
I wouldn't change the pay range, if we change, if we change the pay range, then it's going to affect everybody. And it's gonna affect everybody.
Everything.
Right, then all the, all these jobs would need to be reevaluated and upped, because you can't have a maintenance worker making just as much as someone who has to have a bachelor's degree.
So that extra dollar an hour could potentially cost the city considerable amount of money. Cause as you bump one up, you're gonna bump.
Bump the others up.
No, but so what's his experience?
I left his file in the office, it's not necessarily.
So that, that's where it starts out.
Yeah, it's not.
If he's.
He doesn't have that government city experience.
No, but maintenance wise, so.
He has some, all of them, everyone we interviewed had some.
Years worth of experience, and we hired, you know, somebody with no experience, and then we hired somebody with five years of experience. He's here for five years, he'd be already up to that premium, so that's what you gotta, really gotta look at that.
But I think we are at step three.
Where's step?
No experience to start at step one.
He's at step four, he's asking for.
You want step four or the step six, was, is he currently making that same wage, or is he trying to come in?
He's making a little more than that current wage, but he works in the cities, the west end.
That goes with the evaluation, so we got no one. Or we, or we try to bring some more in with, with the back, and I'm not looking at this personally, but
Something I did do was looked at current openings in other cities, just to kind of reference it, and that's kinda where you could move someone like that to another city, because they are paying a little bit more, I mean, I, I myself drive for this job, and maybe someone else might want to as well. This is something to consider, it all depends on city size, but getting someone like that to the metro, if that's where he's from, or just.
He's living, he's living out in Arlington, correct?
Correct.
And driving to the city, so somewhere that direction to work.
Correct.
So now he's living in Arlington, working on it.
Correct.
Which is what we want, right?
Yeah.
And I think you gotta watch out where he's at, they wise, and where he's at skill wise, let's see if he fits into that range. You know, we're not, right now, we don't have that information to, to make that, that assumption. Or what was the step three pay?
Step three pay was eighteen seventy-three. And Mike is currently making nineteen forty-eight an hour.
So how?
He's asking for step four.
How many years?
Which is what Mike is at.
How many years, how many years of experience does he have to mean what he's gonna be doing?
I have, yeah, I'd have to look at, do you wanna go get his file, it's sitting. He doesn't have exactly city experience.
Whether he's working for government or not, it's a difference.
Somebody else or fixing. You're trying to judge whether or not he's.
Is, is he a mechanic, is, has he worked on roads, has he? Clouds know? What has he? Has he sweet streaks?
Michael will grab the file and.
Well, I'm just curious, if that, well, he has some experience, but not.
So there was two hundred, two people that were working, I believe.
Seven, we interviewed all together, we interviewed three and then opted not to take any of those three, then we interviewed additional four. All of them had some experience.
You gotta take that into consideration.
It's an additional fifteen forty a year. For that, for that position only, for that position, then we don't know how that will affect everybody else's position.
If we change the pay scale, then that would affect everybody.
He's just following in the.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, he's negotiating for a higher rate.
Okay, his experience is delivering ionized water tanks, calibration tech, maintenance tech. Material handler, he was a maintenance tech for four years.
Does it say what he maintained?
Experience in the animal Kirby as well.
Yeah.
Some type of food, some type of food. Knows how to, some maintenance experience, knows how to use tools, fix, has fixed around the house. He can drive a forklift, has driven a dump truck, worked for parks after school, street maintenance and repair, none. Delivers. Worked a long time at a warehouse.
I don't know, I, I, I feel like uh to, to get to step four, you need experience in that position, in that position, and I mean he has a lot of other things, he's been working, that's good, so he has a job, he's reliable, probably, and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, this is, I, as I said last time, I let Kirby, cause Kirby will be working closely with this person, so I, I said, any of them were fine. I said, who does?
This is his top candidate.
This is his pick. So I thought I would, I didn't wanna offer him that much money without council approval, I wanted you guys to weigh in.
He really doesn't have any city experience.
No.
I shouldn't say city experience, experiences of the duties he's going to be performing for the city.
Boiler's license.
Doesn't have a, doesn't have a class. Doesn't have a class B or a boiler's license right now, would have to obtain.
But didn't we talk about, does he have to have a boiler's license?
No, it wasn't necessary.
You can hire somebody to do.
Kirby has the boiler's license, so he can.
We have that one.
Okay, well, so there's a few things that he needs to obtain even to create, or at least get his class B license before. He's even qualified for the position technically, so.
Still retiring, guy retiring has.
Yes, and a boiler's license.
And I'm just wondering when Mike started, if he, how much experience he had and what he is now.
Oh, Mike. Okay, well, he was a farmer, so he had all that experience. I mean, the streets, we've probably not so much, but.
A lot of that, you'd have to work for a city to come in with that type of experience. So mechanic.
Mike, Mike's not as good as a mechanic.
No, but is he, is he? Is Mike, did Mike help us?
That was the guy that we were paying the amount that this guy wants, right?
Yes.
And that's what you're gonna find, I deal with this every day. I just, I just hired a guy for nineteen dollars an hour, you know, he's rebuilt a lawnmower tractor and he's got a little bit of a chemical background. Um, to touch anybody with, with what we're looking for, and I was saying this months ago before he retired, is, is gonna be so big love. It's, it's not the rate that we're expecting, so we either lower our expectation or raise, raise the wage.
Okay, and we are stepping stone, I said that over and over again.
I get that.
Okay, so then, then I guess that's where wages are and I don't know.
So then we gotta take the guy that he didn't want at a less, pretty, you know, at a less wage. So that's the other.
And again, the guy lives here, right?
Right. Not driving from a neighboring town.
Yeah, Kirby Wood represented, he bought his house, yeah, there might be four thighs stacked in him. Maybe I shouldn't add that in there.
That was my concern also.
I, yeah, I, I.
Well, and again, so much of it is contingent on how the interview went, the opinion of the person that wants to do the hire, because I don't know what this guy. What his aptitude is to pick up on all these other things or acquire all these other things.
Is there conflict of interest right now?
It's tough when you interview someone for fifteen minutes.
Yeah, you can't read everything fifteen minutes, and we can't compare him to Mike, I mean, we're gonna put him in Mike's same pay grade. And from what you read, I can see no way that he has the qualifications that Mike has. There, there's no comparison, none.
I mean, Mike was.
That's my problem with giving him Mike's pay.
Mike was on step four for that amount of money and he was compliant with everything. And he wasn't making that kind of money two years ago, and we switched those scales around. So either Mike was very undervalued. Or it's a slap in the face if you're gonna hire somebody with none of that experience.
And that's just it, I would, I, I'm gonna say it, I'm staying for him on step three for this particular candidate. Cause again, the, the line of qualifications is not being met for the step of the person that this applicant just presented.
I was making my offer at that.
I did, and he, and that's where I offered, was at step three.
And again, if you counter, that's fine, but if the counter is denied, then it's up to him to decide if he wants his job or not. I mean, we're not saying you can't have a job, we're saying we're not gonna meet your request at that pay, but you can still have the job. You just gotta work your way up to that.
You know, well, and the thing is, is a year from now, he will be making it.
Yeah, and that, exactly, so.
If he.
If he wants to come in, work hard on himself. Yeah, he's cutting off a commute though.
Yeah, he's cutting off a commute.
That's saving him a lot of.
That's saving him more.
Okay.
My wife commutes for forty years. Yeah, I put, I put twenty-five thousand on last year. And that was probably at six thousand dollars of an expense.
June thirty.
I, again, I, I'm not comfortable offering him the same amount of the person needing when the qualifications aren't the same. And I would rather he show that he can work his way up to those qualifications before offering him that pay. The other candidates that applied were the one or two that were as qualified as he was, that if you did not approve step four.
Yes.
So we do have another option.
It isn't like we have to run out of.
And it wasn't.
We don't know that.
And it wasn't.
It was a guy that your supervisor doesn't want.
It's, yeah, I left it up to. That's.
Well, you're gonna really like him, cause he just bought his house.
But again, is it, is it, is it a deal breaker? If we go to him and we say we're not gonna pay you at the rate that you requested, or yeah, is it off the table? That's.
Oh, seventy-five cents less.
Yeah, but i- if, if we, if we deny his counter request, is that a deal breaker for him? Is he then gonna want? You think so?
Well, you don't know until.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking about, I was talking about something else.
I, I, I don't. I agree, he's gonna make less coming here for one year, but what he, as I said, what he saves commuting, he's financially at the end of the year going to be better off. One year later, he's gonna be even better off. Or if he says no, we go to the other applicant. And I'll tell you, my quality of life has improved since I started working from home because of cutting off nine minutes a day and commute.
Okay, do I read the council's consensus then, was to not offer or to offer the job at step three?
I, I did offer a step three, I went that high because I felt. It, it wasn't quite comfortable offering him what Mike was making without going to you guys, so.
So you offered step three, he countered wanting more.
We came back at four this morning.
We're denying that. Then that does not mean he won't accept. Exactly.
If I go back to him tomorrow.
I understand that. That's fair, he has.
Everybody was waiting same.
Right, yeah, that's, that's common. I, yeah, I would say stay firm at step three and hope that he takes it based on Kirby's relationship.
I, I think that's important, I do.
Uh, Kirby wants to work with him, if he wants to. Hopefully Kirby would say, come on, come on board and work your way up to step four.
But I remember when Kirby was reluctant not working with Mike. He did not want to work with Mike, I remember that.
He was a little afraid that giving orders.
Turned out for.
It turned out.
So. Somebody else could also turn out fine.
Okay. End of discussion on this?
I will go back in tomorrow morning and offer him.
Kirby can twist his arm. All right, item eighteen, something about the.
Yeah, I received. First, we have the fire truck. Turbo went out on tanker one, estimate from chief Saski to fix it is seven thousand, would need tow to get a second quote. Cost of tow, he's looking at having Peeps do it at around seven thousand dollars.
They work the peeps all the time, I think they're fair, say just then do it instead of getting us a bigger.
We got the money for it?
We have to, we have to. We have to, he needs to, we don't have a choice.
And we are required, you want to get enough of it?
Not for, no, not for seven thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion for, uh, to prove, uh, Saski, chief Saski's. That, or, uh, work with Peeps.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Batcher, second by council member Havelston to instruct the police chiefs asking to work with Peeps repair and getting the fire. Truck, turbo and fire truck replaced or repaired. Any more discussion? Here we have, all right, there is a say aye?
Aye.
Always no, motion is carried. Item G for the consent agenda was moved back here, Joe, you had something you wanted to discuss. Is that right?
Oh, that was about the, uh.
The one job?
Yeah, the, the job posting, so we're, we're looking at, uh, the, the posting is going up to hire a full-time, uh. Ambulance staff members.
Assistant ambulance manager.
Ambulance manager, yeah, I'm just, so if you look at, uh, you know, we've currently got, we're certainly paying someone, you know, full-time. Obviously, we have a gap between, uh, the coverage on the ambulance, but, uh, you know, there's gonna be a lot of time. Could we make it a requirement, could we add it into the description to have them be on the, the fire as well, to help out during daytime? I know that's, would have been brought up at another time to, you know, when we were talking about full-time.
Can you put additional input from anyone?
So. We were at a meeting probably a long way in, a year ago.
It wasn't that long ago, six months ago?
Six months ago. And it talked about more of our EMS service, emergency, emergency services, right?
That's where.
Where you combine everything kind of together.
That was kind of.
Right, and the hard thing is, is that. Eventually, eventually, at some point, I feel like it's gonna have to be a combined effort. But I feel like they're so standalone, they're so standalone, if we were to try and intertwine something there. If that would just totally collapse once, seeing that one is ready to, fifty percent of them will be tired just like that. Something that, uh, to interfere with.
Well, I, I would see this as.
I always thought interfere.
I would just see it as an opportunity, cause, uh, the daytime coverage was, you know, a lot of the reason why the, the number was brought up. To what it is today, and John's brought up several times that, uh, you know, there's three businessmen in town that work and literally they're, they're the ones that have to respond all the time. So here we're gonna have this person, what are they going to be doing all day long? And if something comes up, could we not utilize them to, uh, to help out, that's kind of. That's kind of where my mind was going with it.
The services crossover really well, and I know that when that gentleman was here and, and he was talking with us about. His service that he's a part of, and that's their, that's their model that they use. Um, it works really well.
It's Burnsville.
I mean, I see it on bills, there's, uh, different cities going to that same platform. And here we're gonna pay someone and, I don't know, I just see it as an opportunity to kind of broaden our horizon, maybe it's even just a, a testing the waters.
Can I just clarify something? Call it the assistant ambulance manager, but just add that. Requirement to have them also trained as a firefighter?
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
No, we, we want as a. You know.
Do we want it required or just?
Just encouraged. Encouraged.
Highly encouraged.
Joe, what was your, as you brought it up.
My thought is.
Required or strongly required?
And we're gonna pay them forty hours a week. Why not make it be part of the job?
We'd pay for their training if they need it.
Exactly. Yeah, cause we say we ha- highly encourage you, if they don't want to, they're not gonna, and that's the end of that, that is.
So here's a question for you. How many times are there, uh, fire and ambulance called same time?
Happens.
And what with truck?
No, which one do you, best of events?
Well, probably the ambulance, cause that's their main job.
Their main job.
What if they're on a call?
What if they're on a ferry?
Well, they can only be there when they're there. No trip, or they over.
How are they gonna get back?
We don't. You can't count on them.
I mean, I can't answer every.
But I'm just trying to. That's really.
So this would be kind of a test run.
Can I weigh in on this one? As a, as EMS, most, most annuals.